The 2025 Vernon Town Meeting is now in order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. We've had a lot of people in the community who've lost their lives in the last year. Let's honor them with a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Please be seated. Now, just to go over the rules, when you ask to speak, please, if you're on one of the boards, please get the moderator's attention, or if you are speaking from the floor, come to the microphone and again, get the moderator's attention. We will make sure that you have a chance to speak. Again, state your name. We all are neighbors. We've got to know who each other are. It's a big difference from when we had 800 people in town when I was growing up. You knew everybody, and I got to admit, there were people that I don't know, but I want to introduce myself to you. Hi, I'm Tim. All right, so before we go any further, we will introduce State Representative Zahn Estes for a brief rundown, and I do mean brief, of what's going on in the 2025 Vermont Legislature. Let's all give him a round of applause.
Good evening, everyone. Okay. My name is Zahn Estes, and I live over in Guilford, and I would like to... This is the first time I've been to a Vernon meeting, town meeting. So nice to be here, nice to see everyone. Uh, can't quite hear me. All right, all right, I'll get as close as I can. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to serve in this, in the State House, in the legislature. I'm very impressed by what I've encountered so far. I've been there for about two months, and as they call it, the fire hose has come at me, and all of us new ones. So I'm really learning a lot. I want to just say a couple of words about what you're doing here tonight and all over Vermont in these next few days. Guilford had their meeting on Saturday. This longstanding tradition of town meeting, it's, it's central to what the character of Vermont is about. There are very few states in this country, as some of you probably know, that actually do this kind of work in their towns. And so it's really fantastic that democracy is alive and functioning right here. It's very inspiring to me. And so when I go to the legislature, I'm really impressed to be able to be engaged in actually the same kind of process there. And I, in my two months that I've been there, I would like to just attest that I see lots of respect and collaboration. I see careful consideration of ideas and issues. I see willingness to work hard, and I see lots of appreciation for the process of democracy at work. I'm really inspired by Vermont's motto, which is freedom and unity. To me, that means that I have freedom to be who I want to be, as do all of you, but I'm also working with everyone. Unity, we have to be connected in order to make life work here in our brave little state of Vermont. I'd like to just say a couple of things that out over on the table, I, I have a town meeting report that I've published. You might have seen it on Facebook. On the back of the report, you can, is a way that in the yellow, you can reach me about anything that is of concern to you, and I would like to be in touch with you. I'd like to just say a couple of things about the national picture, which is affecting all of us in one way or another, at least initially. We don't know yet how things are going to be affecting the legislature, although we're getting lots of signs coming, lots of unpredictability, lots of quick motions in the, at the national level, and we're right in the middle of the budget process at the state level. And so we don't know too much yet, but we're trying to work very carefully to make sure that if the budgets do come the way they look like they might come, there are going to be a lot of adjustments in all of our lives coming up pretty soon. So I hope to be able to keep you all informed as we go along. I do want to say that what I promised to do, because I believe so much in Vermont and in the character of our wonderful communities, that I promise that I'm going to be working in the State House to protect the sacredness of Vermont's democracy and make sure that it's vital and vibrant as long as we can keep it that way, and that it won't be harmed too much by some of the issues that are coming our way, or at least pretend, are, are out there and look like they might come our way. So I'm just making that commitment to you all. I want to also say that it's been very clear from the voters all across the state of Vermont this year that there are four large issues, four very important issues, and so far, I see the entire, every form of the government, the governor, the senate, the house, everyone's working on lowering taxes. That's the number one issue that we have facing us right now. There's a lot of work going on to try to figure out how we can do that. The second thing that's very important is, and you've all heard about it, and I'm happy to talk about it at any time, there's going to be a restructuring of the way we do education over the next number of years. And I know that's very important here in Vernon, a very important consideration, so I want to stay in touch with you about that. The other, the third issue that's very important is housing. This state is having a, has, has seen a real loss of housing starts over the last number of, of years, and it's keeping us from being able to house people that we can attract to this state to work, but we don't have places for them to live. So we're really working, there's a lot of work on that right now, and then the rising cost of healthcare, which are really pressing on a lot of our pocketbooks. I'm on the Human Services Committee, so I am on the committee that concerns itself with what's called Vermont's Protected Categories. We live in the oldest county, in the, in the oldest state on average in Vermont, so that's definitely one of the concerns that my committee is looking at. So I'm also a member of the Vermont Rural Caucus, which concerns itself with issues that affect the rural towns of Vermont. I'm also on the Older Vermonters Caucus, not because I'm older, although that's a truth, but I'm there because, just what I said a second ago, about the elderly, the, the dignity and the rights of elders here in the state, I'm very concerned about those. I also want to let you know that our Secretary of State has gotten word of, of a, of a recognition that, that they, that she would like to make here in Guilford for Vermont Public Service Award to Tim Arsenault. So I have an award here to hand to, just a piece of paper that acknowledges that Tim's been serving in the town of Guilford here for 27 years. What did I say, Guilford?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm on automatic. I mean Vernon, of course I mean Vernon, yeah, yeah. Tim has served the, the town of Vernon for 27 years as moderator and several years as town clerk. So, Tim, it's with honor that I get to hand you this. That's from, that's from Sarah Hanses Copeland, the Secretary of State. And then the last thing I'd like to say, I really would like you to reach out. My ability to be a good legislator, my ability to be a good representative for, for both of our towns is dependent upon my understanding of your concerns and your issues. I, whether or not you voted for me, I am now representing you, and I want, I take it very seriously that I want to be your representative. So I want to be able to understand what's important to you, and I'll do my best to represent it in the state, in the state legislature. So thank you very much. There are several opportunities to sign up, ways to reach me, I hope that you will, and I look forward to the meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Zahn, for appearing tonight in Guilford. We do appreciate you coming up here to Vernon, so thank you again. At this point in the meeting, we would tell you that we are going to go to the school budget because it's part of Articles 1, 2, and 3, which are being voted tomorrow from 7:00 to 7:00 at the Town Hall. And with that, I'd like to introduce members of the school board, and, gosh, Walter Broe is the current chair. Make sure you speak right into the mic, Walter, and you can introduce the rest of your board.
I will do that. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. At the far end, we have Carrie Amidon, who's the board clerk, then we have Cheryl Brown and Sarah Dio. We do have a short presentation on the FY 2026 budget, and with that, I will turn it over to Carrie to run through it.
How is this? Okay. Everybody in the corner is good? Okay. So we've got a short presentation, let's hope the technology works. Yay. Brief agenda, we're going to talk about the tax rate and the vote you're going to take tomorrow. We're going to talk about a couple hurdles we overcame, talk about student needs, most important to us all, facility needs, and then a really cool innovation that we're doing, and then we will take your questions. So we're not going to bury the lead. We are looking at a 4.9% decrease in your tax rate. So if you currently have $100,000 house, you're going to save $74. You're going to pay $74 less than you paid last year on the school tax side of your tax bill. So at $250,000 house, you're going to pay $184 less on the school tax side than you did last year. So that's the good news. So, the bottom line of our budget went down by $160,000. That is 2% less than last year. Our equalized per pupil cost remains below the excess spending threshold. That's incredibly important. If we go over the excess spending threshold, we get double taxed on any money that is above that. So staying under the equalized rate is incredibly important, so we did that. And good for us that the common level of appraisal went up. So that is a factor that the state uses. The state sets it based on the previous two years' real estate sales, and they use that to equalize. So if you're in a community where, boon town, lots of houses are selling for far above the assessed value versus a town that the houses are selling under the assessed value, the common level of appraisal helps to equalize that, because the town that is selling far above the assessed value, they have more tax capacity than a community whose houses are selling underneath. So that is the common level of appraisal, and luckily, this year, the number went up for us. Now the not as good news. This is that Vernon took a big hit in our equalized student number with a 8.2% decrease. So what that means, when our equalized student number goes down, the end result goes up. So this is a math issue, it's the denominator goes down, your end result goes up. This is the bad part that we had to overcome. So here's what you're going to vote on tomorrow, and this is where we want to make sure you're not confused, because it's confusing. You're going to be voting on a $7.6 million budget, and I've spent most of tonight talking about a 2% decrease in our budget and a 4.9% decrease in your tax rate. But when you go into vote tomorrow, you're going to see the number 7.9% higher. So how does that make any sense? Well, it actually does, but to show it to you, I've got to go to that horrible page that we all hate. Sorry about this. It's kind of small up here, so if you go to page 51 in your book, what we want to note, and I'm going to switch sides here. Oh, sorry. Oh, this might not work here. Oh, yes, it does work. Yay, okay. This is the number we control. We control a 7.680453 budget. Again, that's 2% less than last year. It's $160,000 less. We control that. The next number is down here, it's the end result. This is the 4.9% decrease in your school tax rate. This is the good, happy ending. Unfortunately, this is somewhat like a three-act play. Act One, couple gets together, wine and roses, everything's great. Act Two, big breakup, nightmare, crying, all of that. Act Three, happily ever after. The state makes us stop here. The state only lets us tell the story to you on your ballot with Act Two, but there's more to the story, and it gets really good. It gets to a 4.9% decrease in your taxes. So read the whole story. Okay, the hurdles. So while both the tax rate and the school tax rate and the school budget are down, it wasn't without some difficulty. So as Zahn talked, health insurance costs in Vermont are skyrocketing. I think statewide, the average is 12% up. In Vernon, we're looking at a 20% increase. So that's hard. And there's a new tax on wages, so everyone is now paying a new tax on wages mandated by the state. It's the childcare tax, I'm sorry, it's the childcare contribution. That's what we call it. Student needs, we're all about student needs, so we are always looking to support all the needs of all of our students, K through 12. We try to support our faculty with instructional coaching. We have a multi-layered systems of support that we use to ensure that every student gets what they need. We meet them where they are, and we get them where they should be. We have counseling and social work, and we still have school choice. And then one thing we're very proud of, and thank you to all of the staff who made this happen, we have surpassed our goal of a 10% increase in our sense of belonging among our students. So that's a big one. Facility needs, so thank you to Dennis, wherever he might be, and his crew for setting this all up tonight. We try very hard to use our capital funds wisely. We have new energy-efficient windows. They were installed using ESER funds. Elementary, secondary, school emergency relief. I think I got that right. COVID money. So this was money we received through COVID, and we used it for our window replacement. We've added additional foam insulation. We've got new gas-fired boilers, and the previous oil-fired boiler has been removed, as well as the, it reached its end of life, old underground tank that was right outside those doors. So now for the new innovation. Starting in August, all schools in our supervisory union, including Vernon, are going to transition to an independent food service program. Up until now, we have had a contracted program with a for-profit national company. Now Vernon's incredibly lucky. Our food service program has been fantastic for years, but if you had kids at BAMs or at BUHS, you probably heard complaints. So I serve on the SU Board, and that is where food service happens. And we, as a board, heard a lot of complaints from students, from staff, from the nurses about the lack of food, the lack of good food, not enough food, not really good food, and not well-labeled food, and that's a health concern for our kids. So starting in August, we're going to go and create an internal system of our own. We can run it the way we want. So we've got some goals. Prioritize student health. Program sustainability, making sure we can do this year after year. And local economic impact. And one great thing there is Miller Farm milk is now being served in our cafeteria. So yay, that's a big one. So our focus continues to be providing high-quality education to all students at an affordable price to taxpayers, like a 5 point, or a 4.9% decrease, and balancing our stewardship to the school and to our community, because you're the ones who pay the cost. Now, this we talk about every year, so I'm sorry if it sounds like we're on repeat, but please, if your household income is anywhere near or under $115,000, Google VT Property Tax Credit, because if you file your homestead declaration, if you've lived in Vermont for a year, you're not a dependent, and you've had your property, you can get a credit. So this is very important. If you've never done it, check this out. When you Google that, you'll come to a page, and then it'll get you into the Vermont Tax Department. So very important, if you've never done that, check it out. And I think with that, we're on questions.
Questions on the school budget. Please raise your hand and come to the center of the room, if you would, please. Let's make sure that microphone is on.
357?
Yeah, there you go. Just raise it up. There you go.
Jesse Jobin, hello all. I have a question, and I'm not sure if this is the right place to ask it or not, but I know that if a child goes to, say, Stonely Burnham with a voucher, the families are responsible for paying the difference, what happens to the money if, say, the children go to St. Mike's, and it's half the cost of the voucher?
We do have our business expert here, but I believe if the cost of the, the choice school is below the number that the maximum the state will pay, they only pay up to whatever the tuition rate is for that school?
Okay, I was just trying to figure out why, I guess in my mind, I, again, trying to understand it, the difference couldn't be paid towards the overages for, say, sending a child to Stonely Burnham rather than the, you know, the, the savings from St. Mike's going back into the budget?
Yeah, good question. I would say it's because the regulations don't allow that to happen.
Okay. Oh, you're the guy. I'm looking around at everybody, trying to figure out who I'm looking for. It's you, you're right here. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Further questions on the school budget? Seeing none, do you have anything else, members of the school board?
Yes, we do. Oh, thanks.
We have people to thank.
Make sure you speak into the microphone, please.
Okay, well, we wanted to recognize a couple of our board members, so I'm going to take this moment to recognize and thank Sarah Dio for serving on the Vernon School Board, even with her busy schedule as a mom and a full-time, with a full-time job and as a coach for sports teams. She still comes to the meetings with a open, curious mind to offer thoughts and experience. And Sarah has been a very valuable member of the board, and we would like to thank her for the time she has given us.
And I'm here to, am I on, there we go. I'm here to thank Walter, who has been on the board for 24 years, probably as long as there's been a board. We want to thank him for his quiet leadership. He's been a steady and stable member and one who we can always count on for wisdom and guidance. He tried very hard to end his years without being chair, but luckily, we got him in his final year, and while we're not happy he's leaving, we're happy we got him as a chair for the final year, because it was a very good year. So thank you, Walter, and I promise this is actually elementary school safe. You're welcome. And now we're done.
All right, so thank you very much, Vernon School Board. We'll take a, a brief pause in our action while we bring the select board up. We are in recess. Vernon Town Meeting is back in order. Thank you, it's now time for the select board portion of our meeting. Mrs. Sandra Harris is the board chair, and I'll have her introduce members of the board if she speaks right into the microphone. Go ahead.
If you can't hear me, raise your hand. We have Brendan Bucasi, Jean Carr, Jeff Dunkley, and Jim Pinkerton. You've had a great board. And then we have Kathy Walker, who's the Assistant Treasurer, and Shelley is our town administrator.
Thank you. Is the board going to do anything else before we go to Article Number Four? Please do.
We are. Jeff? We know that you retired last year, but you came back again. We thank you. Carol Hammond, where are you? Carol?
Come back next year, Jeff, you'll get another bag.
Carol Hammond.
Over there.
Carol's been the backbone of our listeners for so long. Come on up, please. You don't want to come up, do you?
I can bring it back to you if you want.
You have to at least stand up so people can see you. Carol is so good at what she does, and she takes advantage of all the education, that other towns call on her when they need help, and she goes. Carol, we're going to miss you, but thank you for all your service. And next is Tim.
Yes?
I've known you since you were about three years old.
You poor girl.
I know. Boy, did you like to play games. Tim, you've been great for the town. Moderator, JP, BCA, Word of Abatement, Town Clerk, and all the other stuff you do. But you, what your wife has said that you're going to retire. You're a smart man.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and just to say, yes, I was born here, I'll die here, but remember, I've been involved in town government 27 years. Sue and I have been together for 38. She wins. So thank you very, very much, everybody. Let's get to work. It is time for Article Number Four. Shall the voters authorize town general fund expenditure for operating expenses of $2,403,759, of which $2,02859 shall be raised by taxes, $282,900 by estimated income, and $100,000 to be carried over from FY '23, '24? Is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Bucasi?
I move that the voters authorize the total general fund expenditure for operating expenses of $2,403,759, of which $2,02859 shall be raised by taxes, offset by the estimated, $282,900 by estimated income with $100,000. $282,900 by estimated income with $100,000 applied from the general fund balance to offset the proposed fiscal year '25-'26 budget.
Do we have a second? Moved and seconded that the voters authorize the total general fund expenditure for operating expenses of $2,403,759, of which $2,020,859 shall be raised by taxes, $282,900 by estimated income, with $100,000 applied from the general fund balance to offset the proposed '25-'26 budget. Mr. Bukasi, do you wish to speak to your motion?
I do. I move to amend the article. Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the Article Four to read, shall the voters authorize the total general fund expenditure for operating expenses of $2,411,379,000, which shall be raised by taxes, $314,320 by estimated income with $100,000 applied from the general fund balance to offset the proposed FY '25-'26 budget.
And do we have a second? Moved and seconded that the article be amended to read, shall the voters authorize the total general fund expenditure for operating expenses of $2,414,79,000, of which $1,999,759 shall be raised by taxes, $314,320 by estimated income, with $100,000 applied from the general fund balance to offset the proposed FY '25-'26 budget? Do you wish to speak to your amendment, Mr. Bukasi?
Yeah, I do. Just one small change, that $1,999,759 should read $1,997,059. And basically, these are just adjustments made on errors, errors to the amendment and editing information, or lack thereof, that we received from the treasurer.
So could we have that number again, please?
You want the first? Do you want both numbers?
I just want the number that's being corrected.
So there's two being corrected. The first would be the, we're correcting the $2,414,000 to $2,411,379. And the number that shall be raised by taxes is $1,997,059.
All right, I believe we have that. Any further discussion on the amendment to the article? Seeing none, we'll move for a vote on the article, and I'll make sure that I get these numbers right. The amendment would amend Article Four to read, shall the voters authorize the total general fund expenditure for operating expenses of $2,411,79,000, of which $1,997,059 shall be raised by taxes, $314,320 by estimated income, with $100,000 applied from the general fund balance to offset the proposed FY '25-'26 budget? Mr. Gassett?
Point of order. I would like to make a motion to divide the question so that the voters can understand where their money is being spent on each line item.
Is there a second? Motion to divide the motion would take a two-thirds vote, and that would not be debatable. So all those in favor of Mr. Gassett's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The chair is in doubt. All those in favor of the motion, please stand, and the clerks and BCA members will need to do account. Please be seated. All votes opposed to the Gassett motion, please stand. Listen now to the results of your vote. Please be seated. For the motion to divide the question, voting yes, 44; voting no, 73. The motion has been defeated. Further discussion on Article Four as amended? And seeing none, we'll move to a vote on the amendment to Article Four. Again, the amendment would be for the voters to authorize the total general fund expenditure for operating expenses of $2,411,79,000, of which $1,997,059 to be raised by taxes, $314,320 by estimated income, and $100,000 from the general fund balance to offset the proposed FY '25-'26 budget? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. The amendment has been passed. We now move to the full article as amended. Any further discussion? And seeing none, all those in favor of the Article Number Four as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. Article Four as amended has been passed. We move to Article Number Five. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $140,536 to be raised by taxes for administration of the Vernon Free Library? Do we have a motion on the floor? Please come to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Juliene Evans, and I'd like to move that the voters appropriate the sum of $140,536 to be raised by taxes for administration of the Vernon Free Library.
Do we have a second? Moved and seconded, the voters appropriate a total library fund expenditure of $140,536 to be raised by taxes for administration of the Vernon Free Library. Mrs. Nevins, do you wish to speak to your motion?
I do.
Please do.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. We have a wonderful library here in Vernon that provides both in-person and online services. And if you'd like the details of all the services, there was a handout that you could, that you can read that's at the check-in table. This year, we have been excited to welcome more than 60 new patrons, and happy to see many faces of our returning patrons as well. All of you have brought our number of registered borrowers to 972. We've been excited to respond to the feedback we've received from you all, including having more programs and opportunities available through the library. Additionally, our board has enjoyed seeing many of you again at the Vernon Community Market, and we appreciate all the participation in the competition we held for a new logo this year, as well as our raffles and book sale. Before I close, I'd just like to leave you with a quote from Doug Wilhelm. "A library is a house of hope. It's a place where we all, whatever our situation, can feed our ideas and develop our dreams." With that, we'd like to ask you support this budget so that the library can continue to serve us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on Article Number Five. Seeing none, we will move for a vote. Again, the motion is that the voters appropriate a total library fund expenditure of $140,536 to be raised by taxes for administration of the Vernon Free Library. All those in favor of Article Five as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. You have passed Article Five. Article Six, to elect a library trustee to fill the unexpired term of three years through Town Meeting of March of 2026. Do we have a motion on the floor? We need to have you at a microphone, please. Thank you so much. State your name.
Cassie Salesman. I nominate Wendy Schuman to fill the unexpired term of three years through Town Meeting of March 2026.
Do we have a motion? Have a second, please. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of Wendy Schuman to fill the unexpired term of three years through Town Meeting, March of 2026, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. Wendy Schuman has been elected. Article Seven, to elect a library trustee to fill the unexpired term of three years through Town Meeting, March of 2028. Is there a motion?
Juliene Evans again. I nominate Cassie Salesman to fill the expired term of three years through the Town Meeting of March 2028.
Do we have a second? Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of Cassie Salesman to fill the unexpired term of three years through Town Meeting, March of 2028, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. Cassie Salesman has been elected. Article Eight, to elect a library trustee to fill the unexpired, actually, to fill the expired term of three years through Town Meeting, March of 2028. Is there a motion?
Nicole Dio. I nominate Kristen Bratton to fill the expired term of three years through the Town Meeting in March 2028.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that Kristen Bratton be filling the expired term of three years through Town Meeting, March of 2028. Any other nominations? Then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. You have approved Kristen Bratton as a library trustee. Article Number Nine, to choose a committee to disburse the income of the Marsh Fund. Is there a motion? That would be Ms. Carr.
Mr. Moderator?
Microphone, please. Got to have a microphone.
All right. Mr. Moderator, I nominate Sandra Harris and James Brown to the Marsh Fund Committee to disburse the income of this fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that Sandra Harris and James Brown be nominated for the Marsh Fund Committee to disburse the income of the fund. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. You've passed Article Number Nine. We now move to Article Ten, to choose a Memorial Day Committee. Is there a motion? Mrs. Harris?
Mr. Moderator, I nominate Pete and Angela Miller to be the Memorial Day Committee.
There's a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded that Pete and Angela Miller be nominated as the Memorial Day Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. You have passed Peter and Angela Miller as the Memorial Day Committee. Article Eleven, shall the voters appropriate a sum of $1,200 to be raised by taxes to fund the Vernon Historians, Inc., for the expenditures related to Vernon's historic preservation, educational promotion, and required insurance? Is there a motion? We need to have you get to a microphone, Ms. Frost. And stand up and make sure we can be heard.
Shall the voters appropriate the sum of $1,200 to be raised by taxes to fund the Vernon Historians, Inc., for the expenditures related to Vernon's historic preservation, educational promotion, and required insurance?
Is there a second? Ms. Frost has moved that the voters appropriate the sum of $1,200 to be raised by taxes to fund the Vernon Historians, Inc., for the purpose of records preservation, retention, and promotion of history, educational initiatives, and insurance coverage. Discussion on the motion?
I would just, I'm going to slow the process down. For those who may not know who the Vernon Historians are, we're an independent 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization run by volunteers, and we're separate from the town government. Our mission is to preserve the historical materials and artifacts of Vernon and to make Vernon's history available to the public. We maintain a history museum and a one-room school, brick schoolhouse, which is owned by the town. The museum is located at 4201 Fort Bridgman Road, and it's open Sundays, 2 to 4, through June through September. We also own and maintain the Pond Road Chapel, built in 1860, located across from the Vernon Pool. The chapel is open for special events or by appointment. We also host programs related to local history, have displays into town office building, four-year, and submit writings to the Vernon newspaper. All events and programs and viewing of the museum and chapel are free and open to the public.
Thank you. Further discussion on Article Number Eleven. Seeing none, all those in favor of the article as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. Article Eleven has been passed. By the way, we had our wedding at the Pond Road Chapel, just so you know. Article Twelve, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $150,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Professional Service Fund? Do we have a motion on the floor?
Chap Baldwin, Lister, I make a motion that the voters shall appropriate the sum of $150,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Professional Service Fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the voters appropriate the sum of $150,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Professional Service Fund. Mr. Baldwin, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes. Really? Does anybody want to hear me talk?
Make sure you get the wireless mic. We want to be able to hear you.
I do have a loud voice.
Yes, but you're being put on TV.
Oh, boy.
I know it's packed up to be, but you'll get through.
I'll get through. My name is Chad Baldwin. I'm one of the Listers of the town. We use the professional service quite a bit when we have issues with utilities and other things. If you turn in your pamphlet to Page Six on the backside, it does have a good breakdown of what it costs with the lawyers. It also mentions that we're going into litigation with Great River Hydro this year, which is a rough cost of about $120,000 roughly as a lowball for what it's going to cost for us to take them to court. But that is the reason why we're asking for $150. There's also only $35,000 left in the fund. I do believe that we should, as a town, have about $50,000 in the fund for any time there is litigation. The town also uses it for other things, so I do wish that there is a little bit of money to be able to pay for that. So, any questions?
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Number Twelve? Mr. Pond? Mr. Pond.
George Pond. I was just wondering, I heard you speak about the hydro dam.
Yes.
Is this, I guess they would call it lawsuit or litigations or whatever against, is this a year-to-year thing? I mean, are they refusing to pay this price on a year-to-year? And how many years are they backed that they owe us money for?
So, they still pay what we assessed them at in 2023, which is 31 million? Hold on, make sure I'm saying million, not billion. Yes, 31 million. They believe that the dam should be assessed at 17 million, which is why they're taking us to court, because they think the value of the dam is much lower. That rate is held from, since 2023 until the litigation is complete. We were in mediation earlier this year, and it didn't, we were not able to come to an agreement. I don't, to be honest with you, I don't know what the outcome's going to look like, but it's just basically a fight over what they think they should pay for taxes and what we assess the dam at.
And from what I hear and understand, and a lot of people may know about it, I believe they're planning on putting a solar field in.
I can't speak to that.
You don't have to. It's around. So, that's going to improve the property value for them, not necessarily for the dam, but the value overall. So, where is that going to come in?
It would be a separate assessed value. With solar assessments, you assess the land it's on, and then the solar array as a separate entity, but that would be completely separate. That would be two different things.
Is that a special permit they have to apply for to put a solar field in?
I don't know the answer to that. I can't speak on that.
Okay. But you could check on it and let me know, couldn't you?
I could try.
Thank you.
Further discussion on Article Number Twelve. Seeing none, we'll move for a vote. The motion is that voters appropriate the sum of $150,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Professional Services Fund. Are those in favor of Article Twelve, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You have passed Article Number Twelve. Article Thirteen, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Emergency Repair Replacement Fund. Is there a motion? Mr. Pinkerton.
First of all, excuse my voice. Mr. Chair, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion that the voters appropriate $10,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Emergency Repair Replacement Fund.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded that voters appropriate $10,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Emergency Repair Replacement Fund. Discussion on the motion? Mr. Pinkerton or anybody else on the board have anything that they would like to add on the question? Seeing none, any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Pond.
George Pond. I was wondering, $10,000 for emergency repair or replace, so where is that money used for? Is it used for town hall or some of the other town places? I mean, is that specified dollar for a specified area other than emergency repair and replace?
The board has queried if it so chooses. Mr. Dunkley? Or is it Ms. Carr? Go ahead.
Okay. It's for any of the town properties if there was an emergency repair that needed to be So, we don't, it's not emergency, meaning we can't foresee something happening ahead of time and designate the money for it. It's when something comes up that needs attention, and the select board decides the payment on that. No?
One possible follow-up, but I'm going to have Mr. Jobin speak first, because according to Robert's rules, you can't speak for a second time unless everybody else who wants to speak gets that chance. Mr. Jobin.
Thanks, Tim. Jesse Jobin again. Curious, we were just flipping through the book real fast, trying to figure out, now that we're on that, what's currently in the budget? Or the fund, sorry.
The fund balance.
What's currently in the fund? Yeah, what's the fund balance? And I have a second part to that after I get the answer.
All right. By the way, that fund information is on page six of your annual report.
Thanks, Tim. On average per year, how much do we use out of that fund? I know it's an emergency fund, so it's hard to tell. I'm just curious, like in years past, over, say, the last five, you know, is it? I know we've used it for, like, the well at the rec or miscellaneous things. It's just curious if 10,000 is still a good number that we should be at, or if we should raise it, and whether or not the fund ought to just be leveled out for a year or two. I mean, 10 grand's only 10 grand, but.
So...
Ms. Carr.
The advantage of having this fund is that the money will carry over from year to year, unlike the rest of the budgets. So, in the event that there are multiple things happening in a year, we should have the money to handle that?
I'm in agreeance that we should have the fund, for sure. I'm just trying to figure out whether or not we ought to raise it or leave it at 10,000, or somebody ought to make a motion to raise it, sorry.
Well, I think that we started it with 10, and we've put, like, 10 in each year, so it seems like it's getting used.
That's it.
Yeah, I think so.
Let you guys have George back.
Under my knees, all set.
Okay.
Any further discussion on Article Number Thirteen? Seeing none, the motion is that voters appropriate $10,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Emergency Repair Replacement Fund. All those in favor of the article, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Article Thirteen has been passed. Article Fourteen, shall the voters appropriate a sum of $150,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Road Upgrading Fund? Is there a motion? Mr. Dunkley.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters appropriate $150,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Road Upgrading Fund.
Do we have a second? Moved and seconded that the voters appropriate the sum of $150,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Road Upgrading Fund. And by the way, you'll find that fund on page eight of your annual report. Do you wish to speak to your motion, Mr. Dunkley?
No.
Further discussion on Article Fourteen? Mr. Wayman, and then we'll do Mr. Gassett afterwards.
This speaks to this article, but also to others. Do we have an estimate of the effect on taxes of passing all of these articles at the recommended value?
The select board has been queried. Mrs. Harris? Please turn on your microphone, ma'am.
No, we do not have that this year. Our treasurer did not get that to us.
Mr. Gassett.
Dale Gassett. Can we quiz the highway superintendent as to any proposal upgrading in the near future?
Mr. Walker is being interrogated if he so wishes, and he approaches the microphone. Mr. Walker.
David Walker. Last year, Dale, we spent 304, and we're looking like at 308,000 this year for the blacktop roads. This year, it's either going to be the lower end of Pond Road, south end, or west road.
Thank you. Further discussion on Article Fourteen? Please come down, Mrs. Baldwin.
I'm Kathryn Baldwin. What does that cover? Does it, that cost? Is that just materials? Because we already, I assume, pay salaries out of somewhere else, and vehicles and stuff come out of a different fund. So, what does that money cover, like, specifically?
Mr. Walker.
That will cover the company that's hired to come in, do the job, complete. That'll be their salaries, everything. Whoever's a little bitter.
George, I didn't hear you. You weren't a toy.
Mr. Pond.
George Pond. So, I asked him if that was going to be Mitchell repaving again this year. And I was wondering, Dave, what's going on with the SAC road project? Is that scrapped, done, gone, or is it still going to happen?
Mr. Walker.
They still haven't agreed on any of that.
Any further discussion on Article Fourteen? Seeing none, the motion is that the voters appropriate $150,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Road Upgrading Fund. Are those in favor of the article, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You have passed Article Fourteen. Article Fifteen, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $40,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Culvert Fund? Is there a motion? Mr. Dunkley.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters appropriate $40,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Culvert Fund.
There a second? Moved and seconded that voters appropriate $40,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Culvert Fund. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
Still no.
Still, thank you. Discussion on Article Number Fifteen? Mr. Rosinski, please go to the microphone, sir.
Don Rosinski, questioning Dave for the money we're building this fund up, and I was questioning if we have specific sites that we're looking at in the near future to put these culverts in, just so that we got some idea of where we're going.
Mr. Walker is interrogated if he so chooses.
We have 18 of these structures. The Tyler Hill one's a smaller one. We've got eight smaller ones, then we have 10 larger ones. There's one on Governor Hunt. There's three on Pond Road. And I'm trying to think of all the others. We've got a couple, like the basin, when that culvert has to be redone, it'll have to be a box culvert. So, right now, we're saving up for Tyler Hill, then we'll move on. It could be one on Pond Road, or it could be a smaller one, depending on what the cost is. And right now, hopefully, if everything goes right, and we can get the grant for 2028, we'll be trying to get it then, so we'll have even more money.
Further discussion on Article Fifteen? Mrs. Baldwin.
Kathryn Baldwin again. It looks like we've only spent about $5,000 in the last two years out of the culvert fund, and it currently has a balance of $418,000.
Mr. Walker is interrogated.
The culvert on Tyler Hill Road, we're looking at $700,000. These are the large ones. It's not the small ones.
Further discussion on Article Number Fifteen?
Hi, Norma Manning. Just a little bit of shameless self-promotion. The Conservation Commission is going to do a wildlife corridor study in the next year, and that's part of the Hazard Mitigation Fund to reduce wildlife, human conflict, and that should help the road commission apply for grants and hopefully get them.
Thank you. Further discussion on Article Fifteen? Seeing none, again...
Mr. Moderator.
Oh, yes. Mr. McCossey.
Dave, I just wanted clarification. These are state-mandated upgrades, correct?
Mr. Walker.
All these culverts are three-foot culverts and larger that have to be engineered according to the state's specifications.
Further discussion on Article Fifteen? Seeing none, the motion is that the voters appropriate $40,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Culvert Fund. Are those in favor of the article, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've passed Article Fifteen. Article Sixteen, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Parking Lots Maintenance Fund? Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Dunkley.
I move that the voters appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Parking Lots Maintenance Fund.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded that voters appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Parking Lots Maintenance Fund. Discussion on the motion? Mr. Dunkley.
No.
Further discussion? You're very talkative tonight, Jeff. Further discussion on the article? Seeing none, the motion is that the voters appropriate $10,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the Town Parking Lot Maintenance Fund. Are those in favor of the article as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You have passed Article Sixteen. Article Seventeen, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $5,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established elderly assistance fund? Is there a motion? Mr. Dunkley.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters appropriate the sum of $5,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established elderly assistance fund.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded that voters appropriate the sum of $5,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established elderly assistance fund. Discussion on the motion? Mr. Jobin.
Jesse Jobin again, I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry.
I'm curious how much money is spent per year and how many seniors currently use I got another question, but I need those answers first.
All right. We'll let you take another question, but Ms. Sherlin, could you answer the question?
This year, we have, during the winter time for plowing, we have 35 seniors that we have been helping this winter. That has taken a huge chunk out of our budget and not leaving us with much. We've had some mild winters. This winter has not been. So, we've been good the past few years, but not this one, as I'm sure everybody's backyard looks the same, full of snow.
Thank you. Mr. Jobin, you have one more question you wish to ask. Please continue.
I was trying to figure out how we raise the amount to 10,000, and I can't remember the correct terminology to use, to be honest.
If you were to do that, you would say, "Mr. Moderator, I move we raise the bottom line on this article to da-da-da."
Ditto.
What would be that? What would be that number? Because da-da-da doesn't get cashed at a bank.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to amend the amount to $10,000. 15?
She asked me 15.
Sorry, $15,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the elderly assistance fund.
Is there a second on the amendment?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the bottom line be raised to $15,000. Anybody wish to speak to the amendment? Please come down and talky-talk into the microphone, ma'am.
Hannah Rosinski, I just have a question about how we determine how seniors get the money, if they apply or what. money, if they apply, or what that process looks like.
Ms. Sherlin, please, you are queried.
There's persons in town that request this. They're required to be at least 65 years of age. They have a form they fill out saying that they are at least 65 years of age. They have lived in town for at least one year, and that they are financially required. That the purpose of the elderly assistance, I guess to say it this way, is to help seniors stay in their home without depleting their savings, without depleting their financial
Thank you. Further discussion on the Jobin amendment.
Have you had application by people that you have not been able to fulfill because of funding?
Ms. Sherlin is queried. The question was, have you had application from people you've not been able to handle because of lack of funding?
So far, we have not. And our person, our contractor that is doing the plowing, he has been very generous and has aided a couple of people above and beyond, and not charged full in doing some of his
Thank you. Further discussion on the Jobin amendment. Please come to the microphone, Ms. Frost.
Heather Frost. Is this fund used for anything else other than plowing?
Ms. Sherlin.
Over the years, it has been used to take down trees that have been in danger of falling on someone's roof. We've repaired septic systems. We've put in ramps. Almost every elder person in town that had a ramp in their house at one time, I think we put in. I don't know, what else have we done? Hot water heaters, yep. We've done most everything. In later years, it's been mostly snow plowing in the wintertime has seemed to be the big thing. It's not just plowing. They sand and also shovel so that they can safely and get their fuel filled.
Thank you. Further discussion on the amendment. Did I see a hand over there? Ms. Jobin.
Faith Jobin, I want to ask if 15 is enough, or if we should raise it to more? Because our seniors are very important. I'm close to being a senior. Shut up.
Didn't say a word.
And we still have two months that we could have a lot of snow. And I'm just wondering if that will be enough.
Ms. Sherlin, you're queried. What's the weather going to be?
Mr. Pond says we're going to get rain and wash it all away, so... I, I don't know. I don't predict the weather either, so I would hope that that would be... We still have... How much do we have left, Kathryn?
Well, at this point, there's...
Thank you. Ms. Walker?
Is that on? Yeah. At this... It's 32... It's not... 32,6...
Use the other mic. Apparently, that's cutting out.
At this point, it's 32,69810.
Okay, well, something's going on there. Can... Try it. Try it again.
Don't touch it.
Okay.
Okay, I have... It's 32,69810 is the balance, but I have a bill that Mary Lynn turned in to me today for $18,23510, which makes it $14,46310.
Yeah, so I think 15 would be, would be fine.
Thank you. Further discussion on the amendment. Right there, sir, please state your name.
Andrea Miller. So my question, I know you said during the winter season, so what about, like, summertime? Are they cleaning, like, are they mowing the grass or something like that, or just winter season? So that was my question.
Ms. Sherlin, I believe you answered some of that, but the question would be, what does the elderly assistance program do for things that happen in the summer?
We do not cut grass unless it's something out of the ordinary. We did one time for someone that I think they broke their arm or their leg and weren't able to do it, so we did that for a short period of time. They need to ask. You know, we do.
All right. Thank you.
We've provided rides to appointments. Need to ask, and then we'll figure it out. But we don't cut grass, because that doesn't prevent you... We decided a long time ago, it doesn't prevent you from living in your home.
All right. Further discussion on the amendment. Would you like to speak a second time to the amendment, Mr. Jobin? You may, if nobody else is speaking. Mr. Rosinski, you haven't spoken to the amendment yet, so you go, Mr. Rosinski, and then Mr. Jobin, in case anybody else doesn't wish to speak.
I, I have to say, we've had a real Vermont winter. And I can totally see where this particular winter has stressed that budget. And I have no problem with the increase for this year because of the fact that this does actually accumulate if it's not spent. Am I correct? And I want to say that people here in Vernon are extremely lucky, because if you look at other surrounding towns, they don't do this. We do. There was a time when this was not even thought of, but I think it's something good. And I also think that someday, maybe I'll need somebody to plow my driveway. But I want more snow, so darn, let's go ahead with it.
Further discussion on the Jobin amendment. Mr. Parker.
Don't get old, it's overrated. I just asked Marilyn a question, and I was kind of surprised when she gave me the answer. And I asked her, why don't you ask for more? And she said that the town administrator put that in the budget, put that in the warrant, and she wasn't even asked. And if she's the head of the... I'm just repeating what she just told me. So I stand corrected if I'm wrong. But if there's no communication to find out how much should be in there from department heads or from people that are volunteering, I think that's a disservice to the whole town.
Further discussion on the Jobin amendment. Ms. Frost, I'll let you talk for a second time if nobody else does. Debate has been moved to be ceased. All those in favor of ceasing debate, this takes a 2/3 majority, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. We're ceasing debate. The motion is to increase the bottom line to $15,000. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Now the motion reads $15,000. So all those... Any further discussion on the motion as amended? Because if not, the final motion would read that the voters appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established elderly assistance fund. If you're ready for the question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You passed Article 17. Article 18, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the town of Vernon James Cusick Scholarship Fund? Is there a motion? Mr. Dunkley.
Mr. Moderator. I move that the voters appropriate $20,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established James Cusick Scholarship Fund.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, the voters appropriate $20,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established James Cusick Scholarship Fund. Do you wish to speak to your motion, Mr. Dunkley?
I do not. I think I've spoken enough already tonight.
Like your father before you, you're a man of few words, Jeff. Further discussion on Article 18.
Faith Jobin, you want to raise and appropriate $20,000, and it looks like only $9,000 was used last year, so why appropriate so much?
The board is queried. If it so chooses. And Mrs. Harris.
Kathy's telling us that she just spent $16,000 out of that fund.
Say that again.
She just spent $16,000 this year for the Cusick scholarships. Those numbers in the book are as of June 30th last year, when the fiscal year ended.
Further discussion on the article. Seeing none, okay, I've got to look around here. Please come to a microphone, if you could, please. And we thank everybody for their cooperation on this tonight.
Karen Amidon. Shouldn't we be able to know how many students are anticipated to need or want to receive this scholarship so we could fund it with the actual amount? Seeing that we just increased one item by $10,000, I wonder if we could perhaps lower that number if we know the actual number of anticipated students who would be receiving
The select board is queried. Yeah, please use the wired mic so we can hear you.
We have no way of knowing until the students apply. Some students choose not to apply, and we have no way of knowing that.
Further discussion, Mr. Rosinski.
Don Rosinski. I kind of agree with the last speaker. This is one thing that is not a necessity. There's money left over, from what I could see, and I don't see why we need to... If, you know, we're always worried about our taxes, and we're worried about the money, this is an easy out, if you will. And I think that there should be... Actually, probably no need for that increase, but I'll leave that to somebody else to decide. I really think that it's, it's important that we remember there are things here that are not necessities. This is a giveaway to people who apply for it. I, I can feel for that, because I've had kids that have gone into school, sent to, kind of to college and kind of not. And I can understand why we would want to help people. But I'm thinking, right now, there seems to be, judging by the amount that we've spent, enough there to do the job.
Further discussion on the motion.
Amy Emery. I have a son with a scholarship, and I can say that is invaluable. It is the only scholarship that's available all years of college. It's the only scholarship that is the second semester of college. It is important. College is crazy expensive. This is a benefit to our town, the only town that does this. It should not be decreased. Some years, not a lot of kids apply, some years, a lot do. So it, we need it.
Further discussion on the motion. If there's no further discussion, again, the motion is that the voters appropriate $20,000 to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established James Cusick Scholarship Fund. All those in favor of the article, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've passed Article 18. Article 19, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $506,837 for funding of items approved in the capital plan, of which $469,758.04 is to be raised by taxes? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator. I move that the voters appropriate $506,837 for the funding of items approved in the capital plan, of which $469,758.04 is to be raised by taxes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, the voters appropriate $506,837 for the funding of items approved in the capital plan, of which $469,758.04 is to be raised by taxes. Discussion on the motion. Ms. Carr, do you wish to speak to the motion?
I would just say that it's in your town report.
It's on pages 7 through 11, by the way.
And it deals with saving up for the items that will be needed over a period of time.
Discussion on Article 19. Ms. Baldwin.
Kathryn Baldwin. I just have a question. So it says the balance is $1,009,997, or $676 on the sheet that was handed out tonight. But based on the tax appropriation from the last time, I can't get the math to work out, to anything less than $2 million as the balance, or over $2 million, so I'm not sure if someone could help me with how we got to that as the balance. I know it looks like we spent $33,000 on some items this year, but we appropriated $529,000 of taxes last year. And it seems like there should be over $2 million balance there.
The select board is queried, or perhaps the Assistant Treasurer will be able to help us.
There are two portions in the capital fund. One is the bank balance. We have a fund investment. That is $936,721.35. The total balance is $2,016,934.31.
Further discussion on the motion. Seeing none, again, the motion is that voters appropriate $506,837 for the funding of items approved in the capital plan, of which $469,758.04 is to be raised by taxes. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've passed Article nineteen. Article twenty. Shall the voters appropriate the sum of sixteen thousand and seven dollars and eighty-five cents to be raised by taxes for the Wyndham Solid Waste District Assessment to fund the previously established solid waste fund? Is there a motion on the floor? Ms. Carr.
I move that the voters appropriate sixteen thousand seven dollars and eighty-five cents for the Wyndham Solid Waste District Assessment to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established solid waste fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, that the voters appropriate sixteen thousand and seven dollars and eighty-five cents for the Wyndham Solid Waste District Assessment to be raised by taxes to fund the previously established solid waste fund? Discussion on the motion. Mr. Jovan.
Sorry, Jesse Jovan, deciding that as I'm reading this.
The fund, by the way, is on page eight.
The question that I had was, it says the cost has increased four percent, which everything goes up. But it says the town's obligated to pay this annual assessment unless it officially withdraws. Have we officially withdrawn? Has anybody, and even then it says that it takes two years, correct, after we officially withdraw?
I believe that question can be answered by someone, either the select board or Mr. Spencer.
Make him stand up. He thought he was out of it. Yeah, thanks.
Excuse me, Bob Spencer, resident of Vernon and also the Executive Director of Wyndham Solid Waste Management District. Vernon's the only town in the district that votes on this, and I think it's related to the fact that there is a special fund that was created many years ago for solid waste. It's actually not a necessary vote, because the town would be obligated to pay this year. And that clarification was to explain that if the town does not vote to appropriate this, then they're going to initiate a process to withdraw, which a town has every right to do. And I would be glad to answer questions, and I know Shelley could, because we work together on solid waste and recycling, as have other members on Solid Waste Committee and Recycling Committee. So if you have questions, I'm happy to answer.
Don't go too far.
Okay.
Further discussion on the motion, I believe. I'll let you have one more crack at this, Mr. Jovan, if you'd like.
Thanks, that's going to take four. So my question is, if we withdraw, or I make the motion to get us out of this mess, we're still in it for two years, so we still have to appropriate the funds, correct? Regardless of what they are at the four percent increase every year for the next, say, two years, or two years past this year, right? Because it's fiscal year twenty-five. Well, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make the motion that we withdraw.
Moved and seconded, that we amend the article by withdrawing. I don't know what the status of the appropriation would be, and our town attorney is not here tonight. He's sick, as.
Let's do it now, then.
Anybody on the select board have any question about, any elucidation about that?
Would that have to be warned?
I, actually, you know what? That would have to be a warrant question, and the article itself was only to be raised by taxes. The article does not speak to whether the town should withdraw from the solid waste district.
May I?
You may.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to change the sum to zero, if that's allowed.
I believe that you can vote to amend, to defund the article, if you so choose. I'm flying kind of blind here, but I believe that would be the case, so. Discussion on the amendment. Mr. Bukasi.
Mr. Moderator, I would query, Bob, specifically to talk about, you know, some of the state mandates that being part of the district covers, that we would have to cover as a town if we were not a member.
Mr. Spencer.
First of all, there's, as of today, a hundred and seventy-two families in Vernon that have access stickers to utilize Wyndham Solid Waste facilities. That number surged a lot since we did away with curbside recycling and trash. So there is a fair amount of interest in using the facilities.
They pay for that separately, though, correct?
Pardon?
They pay for that separately, though, correct? The stickers?
Yes, yes, yes. You don't get stickers.
So they're still privately paying for the sticker and the use of Wyndham Solid Waste?
One of you should talk at a time, because half the conversation can't be hurried by the body.
I was trying to explain, so if he wants to ask me questions, please address the microphone.
I don't know how many times Tim's going to let me up here. I said four. He didn't believe me. What I was saying was, the families individually pay, or the households individually pay for the use of Wyndham Solid Waste. So even if we make the fund a zero, they can still choose to pay to use Wyndham Solid Waste separately, of us having to pull this, or pay for this if we withdraw, correct?
Mr. Spencer's going to answer that question.
No, once a town is not a member, their residents are not eligible to utilize the
I just wanted to know the number he said that people were using again, because we're at sixteen grand that has to be raised, trying to figure out if it's worthwhile or not.
And there are other people who wish to speak to this amendment. Got to go down the list here. We'll start with Mr. Parker, and then, I might not get separate if I don't have Mrs. Arseno speak after that.
Mark Parker. As a point of, not point of order, but since the state has been mandating and telling us what to do for years, when it comes to trash removal and recycling, we as a town have done fantastic at doing our fair share. And it seems like every time we do everything correct, we get hosed in the end. And this is just a continuation of that. Now, I'm just curious. You say there's how many, a hundred and?
Seventy-two.
Hundred and seventy-two people in town using the sticker. So if we pull out of this, they won't be able to throw their trash up in Bradaburl at the dump? Let's call it that. It's a dump. Anyway, now what about all the people in town that are using outside vendors, like the, well, Casella, and Franklin's, and the others?
Good enough.
Good enough. They have no problem with, if they pay that a month, does that kick them out of the solid waste? Does that, okay, okay. So if they're paying a separate entity to come in and take their trash and recycling, so my question is, if we pull out, it's the hundred and seventy-two people, they would have to find a different way to dispose of their refuse. Is that correct?
Yes, it's actually a hundred and seventy-two households.
Households.
So that represents more than a hundred and seventy-two.
Right.
But once a town is not a member, then everyone's, and you don't have to look too far. Whitingham is not a member. Wind Hall is not a member. But most of the towns, when they look at the value, and this is, I never got a chance to answer Mr. Bukasi's question, that there's many state mandates that we take care of, and if the town were not a member, he would still be on the hook to do these things that the state requires.
For two years, if we decide to pull out?
No, forever.
So we're, so we have to pay no matter what?
There's different ways to pay. You can either have the Wyndham Solid Waste do it on behalf of the town, and I have a whole list of things that we do, which I don't think people are interested in knowing, but every time a town evaluates this issue, they pretty much decide it's well worth it, versus trying to do hazardous waste collections twice a year at your own cost, doing a solid waste management plan every year, going and reaching out to businesses and schools providing education. There's a lot of things that we do. No, they're all good questions, and I welcome anyone to learn more about the services that you have with Wyndham Solid Waste. It's actually a very good deal.
Okay, further discussion on the proposed amendment. Mrs. Arseno, and then Mrs. Arms.
Can you hear me now? What am I going to do with my compost? Do any of the private trash pickups pick up compost, any of them?
My goats.
Any of them?
Your husband pees in my goats.
But your goats can't eat everything that I have in my compost.
That sounds like hazardous waste.
Well, goats can't eat meat. They're not supposed to have avocados. They're not supposed to have onions.
By a pig.
What's everybody doing with their compost?
Mr. Spencer.
Very good question. We do offer backyard composting bins and classes. True. So when we closed the Town Highway compost drop-off in 2016, I think, we had a big surge in people buying access stickers, because people like to divert their compostable products, particularly when you were paying for a bag of trash, and now you had to decide, do I put my pizza boxes and coffee grounds in a four-hour bag, or do I put it in the compost at no charge? So it's typically seen as a cost saver. I also wanted to point out that Vernon's representative to the district is Sandra Rulowicz, who's sitting right here, and she attends almost all the meetings. She's also on the Finance Committee, and you are very well represented here. And anyone is welcome to attend our meetings, which are monthly, and you're welcome to come to our facility. We just opened an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar composting facility. It's a state-of-the-art to take Wyndham solid waste into the future of recycling food waste. So we made a big investment, thanks to the town. The district itself put over four-hundred thousand. The rest was funded through grants. And I'd love to have people come see this wonderful new facility. It's inside a building. It captures heat, reuses it. It's a model facility.
Thank you. We have Mrs. Arms, and then Mrs. Ellis.
Madeline Arms, and I would like to support Bob Spencer and Wyndham Solid Waste. Having been on some committees that deal with legislation and the state and the federal government, it's nice to know that we have someone who is an engineer and who's well-versed in what it takes to run a facility like that. And I think Vernon would not be wise to pull out of it at this point.
Mrs. Ellis, and then, I thought there was somebody down here who wanted to speak, and then Mr. Pond. Go ahead.
Elizabeth Ellis. It seems like a year ago, our select board told us that we can no longer afford to have curbside trash and recycling, and that we, it didn't really go to a vote. It was just we were told that we could not afford it, so we all had to do our own thing. And I feel like everybody has made the choice now. They've had to choose what they're going to do. And it seems like we were told the taxpayers are on their own with their trash and recycling, and I think that's the way it should be. And it also seems like probably less than half of the town is using the Wyndham solid waste. And we also have, it looks like we have two different funds that have money in them for some solid waste. We've got the pay-as-you-throw, still has some money in there. Thank you.
Further discussion on the amendment. We'll go with Mr. Wayman, then Ms. Frost afterwards.
I'm not sure I heard it right, but I believe I heard that if we make this article zero, we will have to take that money and pay Wyndham Solid Waste out of other tax general fund money. The amount has to be paid, whether we have it in this article or not. Is that correct?
The board is queried.
Well, only if we withdraw. If we put this article to zero.
We still.
For this year, you still have to pay it.
Further discussion on the amendment. I believe there's a young lady who's coming to the microphone. Trying to figure out which ones first. I thought I saw a hand down there.
No, she doesn't want you down.
Come on up. Or if this were The Price is Right, I'd say, come on down.
Hi, Donna Tozey. I would like to make a motion that.
There was already an amendment to the motion on the floor. We need to deal with that first.
For the sixteen thousand?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to withdraw my amendment. So we can all move on.
Okay, Mr. Jovan withdraws the amendment, so. Ms. Tozey, please continue.
I would like to amend the article to raise through taxes eight thousand dollars for the Wyndham Solid Waste District Assessment, and to move the pay-as-you-throw current excess of eight thousand seven hundred eighty-seven fifty-five into that fund.
Give me those numbers again, please.
Amend the article to eight thousand to be raised by taxes, and move the balance on page seven, pay-as-you-throw, eight thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents into that account.
The Tozey amendment has been seconded. Any further discussion on that proposed amendment? Mrs. Harris.
The correct balance as of today is seven thousand five hundred sixteen dollars and eighty-one cents in the pay-as-you-throw.
So does that change the number overall?
I would not change the number.
We can't hear you if you just speak out of the crowd.
I would leave the amendment to eight thousand and move the balance of the fund over.
All right. The amendment has been moved and seconded. Come on down.
Sandy Morrison. I have to say, I'm having a little trouble following and keeping track of the funds and the money, but I'm looking at solid waste management fund, and we have, according to the town report, a hundred and five thousand nine hundred sixty-nine dollars was in there. And if I remember, when we were told to find our own way to get rid of our refuse, Mr. Bukasi was explaining that we would keep this money because we might revisit this, or the town might do something again. But in the meantime, why wouldn't we just take money out of this to pay Wyndham Solid Waste? I'm just curious. I don't know how this works, but it just seems like we're kind of duplicating what we don't need to.
Mr. Bukasi.
I would support that.
All right, Mr. Brzezinski. All right, Mr. Rosinski.
Don Rosinski, I think that the idea of whatever the number is left over in the Pay As You Throw Fund could be utilized to reduce whatever the number is here. Either way, there's no more Pay As You Throw, so that money should go someplace else, preferably towards waste. So I just think that you're right. This is something we could support.
All right, further discussion on the Tozey amendment. And let's see if I have this correct. The amendment would be to put $8,000 to be raised by taxes into the Solid Waste Fund, and the rest would come from the balance of the Pay As You Throw Fund? Please, please return because I... We can't hear you all the way down there. In fact, I would tell you that my wife tells me I can't hear her when she's sitting next to me.
So do we need a different... Or an amendment to the amendment or whatever, wherever we're at, to take that Pay As You Throw money and sum from the $105,000 that's in the Wyndham Solid Waste line item already? How do we get to use that money? What do we need to do? So we don't need to raise any more with taxes?
Does the board have an idea for a substitute amendment?
How much is in that?
Mrs. Harris?
Unfortunately, some figures have not been posted. So we can't give you an accurate figure. But you could make an amendment... You could make a motion to amend this to take the funds from the Pay As You Throw and the balance if we have it.
To go toward this payment to Wyndham Solid Waste?
Right.
Can I so move that?
If Mrs. Tozey will allow that substitute amendment, I'm all for it. Because I just don't want to get into the realm of tertiary amendments because we'd be here all night trying to figure out what we're doing.
Donna Tozey, I withdraw the amendment.
Okay, so the amendment that Mrs. Morrison is doing, if I hear you correctly, would be to take money from the remainder of the Pay As You Throw Fund with the balance to come from the Solid Waste Fund to fund the article.
Yes.
Second? All right. Not a math major, but I'm getting there. All right, so any further discussion on the Morrison amendment? If nobody else wants to speak, we're gonna go to the question anyway, Dawn. So all those in favor of the Morrison amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. And the article is amended. So the final version of the article would be that the voters appropriate the remainder of the Pay As You Throw Fund with the balance going to the... From the Solid Waste Fund to support the Wyndham Solid Waste Assessment. All those in favor of the article as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. We've gotten off of Article 20. Article 21, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $17,250 to be raised by taxes to help support the operating expenses and utilities of the Governor Hunt Community Center? Is there a motion?
I'd like to make the motion, Mr. Moderator.
And your name is?
Arlene Palmeter.
Please continue.
I would like to ask that the voters appropriate the sum of $17,250 to be raised by taxes to help support the operating expenses and utilities of the Governor Hunt House Community Center.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, the voters appropriate $17,250 to be raised by taxes to support the operation of the Governor Hunt House. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
I do. So bear with me because I'd like to read this because I know this is a potentially contentious article because this has been addressed in the past, the support or ownership of this building. So I'm gonna read this to you. And I'm speaking to you tonight as a representative of the Board of Directors of the Friends of Vernon Center, which is the nonprofit entity that owns and operates the Vernon Community Center and the historic Governor Hunt House. The mission is to preserve and care for the historic house and to promote the community center and the grounds as a gathering place for activities and foster community spirit, honor our heritage, and support ways to enhance and serve the well-being of the residents of our town now and for future generations. Our request tonight is to ask for your support to share in a small portion of the operational expenses of the Vernon Community Center. Nine years after the residents of Vernon turned down the ownership of this property from Vermont Yankee, Vernon's a different town, but it remains a strong community because of the people who live here. The goal of this community center is to continue to build on that sense of community that many Vermont towns no longer hold true to. A community center is an asset to any town. Having been in the real estate business for many years, I know what people look for when moving to a Vermont town. They look for good schools, a strong sense of community, family-oriented programs, and senior support, convenience, and friendliness. A community center can offer free programs, free meeting space, and community events at no charge each time to the residents. This has been our practice, and it is our goal. But as any new business, this 501(c)(3) is no different than any other private business. 90% fail in the first few years because they're undercapitalized. We at the Vernon... At the Governor Hunt House need more time, and we need your financial support to support the community center with a revived vision. Since taking on the property in 2020, the Friends of Vernon Center were recipients of a two-year startup grant from the Thompson Trust for $50,000, which helped support operating expenses. Unfortunately, the Thompson Trust supports only new startup programs for developing and building community. In addition to that grant money, funds were raised with a few private space rentals, public events, and programming. In December of 2023, after major renovations were completed, the building opened its doors for year-round use. So we now have 12 months of experience to estimate a budget. We know our operating costs and the budget, for full disclosure, is for 2025 is $50,100. Tonight, we're asking you for only $17,250 to help pay some of those operating costs, particularly our utilities and insurance. This request is only 3.4% of the annual budget. At the current tax rate, that equates to $4.32 per $100,000 of your assessed property value annually at the current tax rate. For each Vernon resident, this ask is a total of only $15 to $20 a year, depending upon your assessed value. It seems like a nominal cost to support a community building which provides rental space, renovated bathrooms, a new kitchen, meeting rooms. Maybe town meeting can take place there. Public Wi-Fi, emergency shelter, space for seniors to gather, space for exercise classes, and many other opportunities for community gatherings and personal use. Our plan, although a reach, is to raise the other 96% of the budget with continued donations from individuals, revenue generated by private rentals and grants, although it's hard to secure operational funds through grants. So in closing, thank you for your time. Thank you to all who have and continue to support the community center, both financially and by volunteering. Thank you so much for the... To the past members of the Friends of Vernon Center Board who have given extensively of their time and energy for years to make it today, to give us today an accessible community center facility and a beautiful historic Governor Hunt House for all of us to enjoy. Most all the capital improvements are complete, and the improvements were all paid for with grant monies from HUD, ARPA fund support, and a Vermont Historic Preservation Trust. And you can see all those improvements on page 37 and 38 of your report. If you have not been in the building, please make a point of coming to see it. And lastly, we need to know how to best serve the residents of Vernon and what you would like to see at the Vernon Community Center. And on the table and outside, there's a scan code if you want to scan it and take a survey and give us your input. But tonight, we ask for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Further discussion on Article 21.
Jesse Jobin again.
Please speak up, sir.
Oh, sorry. The mic got tipped down. I wasn't ready for that.
All right.
So as stated, it was many years ago that we decided that we didn't want this building because we didn't want to have to pay for it as taxpayers. I, Mr. Moderator, would like to move that we do not fund the $17,250 to be raised by taxes to support the operating expenses of the Governor Hunt Community House.
If you vote no on the article, you do not fund it. If you vote yes, you fund it.
I would like to defund it.
Well, then, vote no on the article. It's that simple?
Oh, I'll make it easier. I'd like to amend it to read as we appropriate the sum of $2,000.
So you'd like to amend the article? Is there a second? Okay. Mr. Jobin votes... Moves to amend the article to $2,000. Further discussion on the Jobin amendment? Down here, the young lady that is walking toward the podium right now.
I'm Donna Smith. I teach yoga at the Governor Hunt House. This is our community center. I grew up in poverty. I'm not kidding. And there was no community. I am honored to have been a Vernon resident. I'm a Vernon resident since 1999 and feel a sense of community here. Are you kidding? Without the... Our Vernon Community Center at the Governor Hunt House, we don't have a place. Do you see other places to gather? Yes, we have here. This is wonderful when it's available. The town hall is great when it's available and you have a sense that... I mean, a town function. I can't even believe that we wouldn't fund this a full $17,000. Are you kidding? Seriously, we should own it. You're absolutely right.
Let's address your comments to the moderator, and do not comment while another speaker is speaking, please.
So my heartfelt sense is that this is our community. This is our center. It's not the Friends of Vernon Center. It's ours. I teach chair yoga. I teach yoga there. I attend other functions there. I've been here since 1999 and feel finally a sense of community. I'm almost getting emotional because this is our place. It's our place, folks. So I ask you to think about that. Where did you grow up? Did you have a sense of community? Perhaps you did. I did not. I found it here. Thank you. And I'm honored to be a Vernon resident and someone who actively participates in events at our community center. Thank you.
Further discussion on the Jobin amendment? We will go to Mr. Rosinski, then Mrs. Arms, then Mr. Parker.
Don Rosinski. First off, I'd like to start off by saying that I think it's a shame that the town decided they didn't want the building. I think we should be very thankful that this group's took... You know, got up to the plate. We have a historic, a beautiful historic place there. To start with, it's a big piece of our history, probably the biggest piece in town. And then to add to that and have a beautiful spot to host any kind of events is just amazing. I think we should support this 100%.
Madeline Arms, and I'm going to say a few of the same things that Mrs. Palmeter said because I think the town needs to hear it.
Make sure you speak a little closer to the mic, if you would, please.
I moved to Vernon because I believed that I could afford to live here. And as a whole, the town was welcoming and safe. That was in 1994. Well, things have changed. In the ensuing years, we lost VY, which was our solid base for tax revenue. And a lot of people who worked here and there had to leave. They lost their jobs. Entergy Vermont Yankee offered the Governor Hunt House to the town when it shut down the plant. But the town of Vernon decided not to take ownership for good reasons. I agreed with that decision. So a nonprofit, the Friends of Vernon Center, took on the enormous responsibility with the intention that the Governor Hunt House would eventually support its costs through applying for grants, fundraising, and revenue-based events that would be supported by Vernon and the surrounding communities. The building was constructed in 1764. And although it was partially refurbished by Vermont Yankee, it needed a lot of help and major repairs. Most of those items have been addressed and fixed as of this last year. Thus, hosting revenue-generating events and community gatherings were severely limited during this period because of the ongoing construction. We are asking for the town's help and support to supplement the operating expenses this coming year. I didn't say it was every year. I said this year. It's a big ask. I know that for a town that didn't want any part of ownership. But I think that in the coming years, as we try to redevelop the Vermont Yankee site and bring new businesses and families to town, it will pay huge dividends. And it will attract the kind of people and the families that will build a secure future for Vernon in the coming years.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Parker.
Mark Parker. When I got my town report and I was going through it, I saw this particular article. I had to think back a few years because when Friends of Vernon first came up with this idea of taking over the Governor Hunt House, I can't remember because I don't have my old reports. I think I brought up a question that sooner or later, some... This organization was gonna come to the town and ask for money. And I was against it then, and I'm still against it because of the fact... I've been to the Governor Hunt House. It's very nice, the repairs and everything. It's very nice. Don't get me wrong. It's a nice building. But I knew right from the start, sooner or later, they were gonna come to the town and ask for money. I knew it then, and when I saw it in the report this year, I knew it came true. They're asking for $17,000 this year, they say, to help them over the hurdle. Fantastic. What happens next year or the year after? And they say, "Well, we got this other hurdle. We got this other hurdle. We didn't get the grants. We didn't get this. We're looking for money. We're looking for..." Again, and again, and again. That's not what this was sold to us in the beginning, that they were gonna be nonprofit. They were gonna run this themselves. They were going to not ask for the town for money. And here we are. And again, it's a nice building and things of that nature. I've been to some of the events. And... I've been to some of the events. And I'm sort of taken aback with the statement that you're part of the community, that you never had a community before. I've been in Vernon for 46 years. Vernon is my community. I'm a transplant from Northfield. Vernon has been my community. Vernon is home. I have loved this town. I have served this town in different capacities. I'm still serving this town as a volunteer through the fire department in my own way. I don't ask for anything, but it seems like this is gonna start and then it's not gonna stop. And I, for one, plan to vote against it.
Further discussion on the Jobin amendment, sir? You're next.
Andre Miller. Hi, everybody. So I've been to the Governor Hunt House once last year and, you know, I moved here in 2020. And I've been going by this and I'm like, what is this place? So I decided to stop there last year. And I was very impressed to see how the, you know, the inside, the interior, everything, it looks so beautiful. And I realized that there is so much potential with this place. So I believe as a community, if we can continue to do that, coming from Jamaica, I definitely can relate with that first person who spoke about not having a community. So coming here, I felt that. And I think that there is so much potential in this place and, you know, I'm all for it so we can keep it going. That's it.
Chair recognizes Mr. Emery.
David Emery. I think we've all heard some very compelling arguments for and against supporting the Governor Hunt House. However, I think there's a couple of things I would like you to think about is, one, you're not going to replace the Governor Hunt House if we don't keep it up. We really need to keep it up. And whether it's through us as taxpayers or whether it's through the group, I strongly encourage that. Also, it was mentioned that that is an emergency shelter. And it is designed and offered to be an emergency shelter for a small group if we had to move somebody in the event of a fire or whatever case may be. And that's obviously at no cost to us. So I would urge you to support that cost of $17,000.
Further discussion, please come forward.
Karen Amadon. I question the idea of our Vernon tax money being used as gifts to places outside of Vernon. So I would like to have everyone think about Vernon and how we can afford the $17,250 that would stay here in Vernon for Vernon. If we were to skip all of the funds that are requested in Article 23 through 29, they total $17,376. If we voted all of those down...
I would tell you, we're discussing Article 21.
Then we can afford Article 21 at $17,250 and still be up $126. Thank you.
Again, we are discussing Article 21. We need to confine ourselves to the amendment, to that motion. Any further discussion? Please come around. The question has been called to cease debate. All those in favor of ceasing debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. So the pending amendment on the floor from Mr. Jobin is to lower the bottom line on this article to $2,000. All those in favor of the Jobin amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The nays appear to have it. The nays have it. The amendment defeated. We go back to the main article. Further discussion? And seeing none, we go to the vote on the article. All those in favor of Article 21 as originally read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You passed Article 21. Article 22, shall the voters approve the sum of $15,000 to be raised by taxes for operation of the Emergency Management Office? We need a motion on the floor. Mr. Bukasi.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be raised by taxes for the operation of the Emergency Management Office.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, the voters appropriate $15,000 to be raised by taxes for the operation of the Emergency Management Office. Mr. Emery, do you wish to speak to the question?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I know every year I stand up here and I say to you all that Vernon's been fortunate, that we haven't had any major disasters. And I'm happy to say that we, again, have survived this year. However, every time that you turn on the news these days, the whole world is changing with lots of different disasters that are happening. So I'm a believer that it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. So that's why the whole state and the country is prepared through emergency management. Our job is not to respond to the incident. That's why we have a wonderful fire department and rescue to do that. Our job is to be a coordinator, to help coordinate outside agencies, help relocate people, work with the Red Cross, work with all these other people in the event that something does happen. However, it doesn't have to be a major disaster. It could be something much, on a much smaller scale. It could be an evacuation of the elderly housing, housing of, because of a propane leak that we all heard about tonight. So it could be multiple things like that with short-term help, and that's where our group would come in. I'm happy to say that I've reported over a number of years that we were moving the EOC from Vermont Yankee's house of the old Edson house, that we have 99% completed that. We have moved the Emergency Operations Center into the basement of the town hall where the Sheriff's Department was, or if you're from the age is where the police department was. So we have taken over the large part of that room. The Sheriff's Department still has a presence there, and they still have the ability to use our room as well as a smaller office there. So with that, I forgot, Tim, I gotta put my glasses on, too. Okay. Not only do we do that, but we're also the contact for, through the Department of Health. As you remember, I reported on COVID for a number of years. So I would tell you that all of those COVID, RSV, and all those things are still part of our, our stuff that we deal with. And then vaccinations, as well as, we are an all-hazards plan. Vermont Yankee is still here, and there's no plan for the fuel rods to be disposed of anywhere except for where they are right now. We work with the schools. We, I'm part of the emergency planning for the schools, as well as I'm chairman of the Advisory Committee for the Fire Group. Vermont Alert is probably, if, I know you've heard me say it, and it's worth repeating every time. VT Alert is an agency from the state that if there wasn't an immediate thing that we needed to contact large groups of people, if you are part of Vermont Alert, it can be done locally or it can be done on a state level. And it also gives you weather warnings. It gives you if 142 was closed for whatever reason, it can be put in so you can plan to get around. So it has a great deal of information. VTalert.com, and you can sign up just for this area so you don't have to understand what's going on in Burlington if you didn't care. So I encourage you to do that. Wyndham Regional, that you're probably somewhat familiar with, used to be part of the state, and they were the ones that were forming and coordinating the Regional Emergency Management Group. They are no longer doing that, so the towns are all on their own to do that. So that brings me to the Red Cross. We have to make our own arrangements now for setting up an evacuation area. And there's a number of places that we've been working out. Obviously, the school becomes a site for a large evacuation. If we couldn't man this, then now what happens is the Red Cross is set up regional. Brattleboro Union High School is designated as a regional place. So if we had to leave Vernon, that's where we would be instructed to go to there for, for any type of evacuation beyond something local. With that, I've talked enough. I will answer any questions.
Further discussion on Article 22. Mr. Emery.
I forgot the most important thing. $15,000 is why we came up here. I'm hoping that next year, we've still got some things to move, radios, but next year, we should be able to reduce that budget because now we're going to be sharing the heat and electricity and all of that. So that budget should be reduced. I pick a figure right now without saying anything, by $5,000 very easily.
Thank you. Further discussion on Article 22. Seeing none, again, the motion is for the voters to appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be raised by taxes for the operation of the Emergency Management Office. All those in favor of the article, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You have passed Article 22. Article 23, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $1,000 to help support the gathering place? Do we have a motion? Mrs. Harris.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters appropriate the sum of $1,000 to help support the gathering place.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, the voters appropriate the sum of $1,000 to be raised by taxes to support services provided by the gathering place. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
No, sir.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Voice.
Good evening, Georgia Voice. On page 32, the gathering place is only asking for $750, so I'm wondering why the article's asking for $1,000.
The select board is queried.
We got two requests.
They have two requests?
No, evidently, we got two requests.
And there's only one in the book?
Yeah. That's all I can think of.
All right. Any further discussion on the article? Seeing none, all those in favor of appropriating the sum of $1,000 raised by taxes to support services provided by the gathering place, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The nays appear to have it. The nays have it. You have defeated Article 23. Article 24, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $850 to help support the Women's Freedom Center? Mrs. Carr.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters appropriate the sum of $850 to be raised by taxes to support the services provided by the Women's Freedom Center.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, that voters appropriate the sum of $850 to be raised by taxes to support services provided by the Women's Freedom Center. Discussion on the motion. Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Chris Plante, and I'm a Vernon resident.
Okay, please continue.
I am the chair of the Women's Freedom Center board, so wasn't planning on speaking, but if anyone has questions, I'll try to answer. It is a vital resource that is not offered otherwise in Vernon.
Further discussion on the article. Seeing none, again, the motion is that voters appropriate the sum of $850 to be raised by taxes to support services provided by the Women's Freedom Center. All those in favor of the article, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The nays appear to have it. The nays have it. The motion has been defeated. Article 25, shall voters appropriate the sum of $2,100 to support the services of the Southeast Vermont Community Action? Is there a motion? Mr. Bukasi.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters appropriate the sum of $2,100 to be raised by taxes to support services provided by SEVCA.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, that voters appropriate the sum of $2,100 to be raised by taxes to support services provided by SEVCA. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, Mr. Gassett.
Dale Gassett. I understand this is a nonprofit, is that correct?
The board has been queried.
Yeah, my short research on the internet, yes.
Is there somebody here can speak to exactly what the expenses are and what they provide and what, what it's all about? I mean, it's very difficult as a taxpaying citizen in this town to support something that, we're a generous town, that we don't know anything about. So is there a representative here can speak to this?
I don't know if there's a representative here in the, in the audience. I cannot, although, excuse me, I believe in the town report, there's a write-up. Someone said page 30.
So the details were only in that report on that page. There's nothing else. No emotional repeal from anybody from that group. Is that correct?
That's correct, as far as I know.
Chair would recognize Mrs. Arsenault.
I'm not from that group, but, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, that is the group that paid for extra winterization when your mom was living at home. Did some... I thought that's what we were doing. SEVCA.
Yeah, that is SEVCA.
This is SEVCA. So that kept Tim's mother in her home, and she was a Tyler from the Tyler farm. So how many generations had she been here? I don't know.
Ms. Sherwin.
I know a number of families or older citizens in town that have received services from SEVCA. Same thing, winterizations in their home, windows, doors that were, weather was blowing in, replaced refrigerators that were far outdated and not functioning properly. They've come in and done those things for them.
Further discussion on Article 25. Ms. Carr.
I think that it would be very worthwhile to look at page 30. They've got a list of everything they provided to Vernon, and apparently, the combination of all their services to our residents exceeded $17,210.
Further discussion on the article. Seeing none, again, the motion is that voters appropriate the sum of $2,100 to be raised by taxes to support services provided by SEVCA. All those in favor of the article, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You have approved Article 25. Article 26, shall voters appropriate the sum of $6,576 to support Southeast Vermont Economic Development Strategies to provide workforce and economic coordination services to the Wyndham region. Is there a motion? Ms. Carr.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters appropriate the sum of $6,576 to be raised by taxes to support services provided by SEVids.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, voters appropriate the sum of $6,576 to be raised by taxes to support services provided by SEVids. Discussion on the motion.
Hi, again, I am Chris Plante, and I am here with my coworker to speak on behalf of SEVids if there are any questions. And I would request that my coworker be given permission to speak as she is not a resident.
Unless there's objection from the body, she would be allowed to speak. So your coworker is allowed to come up then. And please state your name.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm Dani Delaney. I work at the BDCC. I'm the Assistant Director and Head of Business Acceleration. If you have questions about SEVids, the program, a program that you've been contributing to for many years, that helps the entire Southern Vermont region really focus in on workforce development, economic development initiatives, and a number of other things, including business services, there's actually a couple of entrepreneurs, I can't point them out right now, but they're getting our services right here in this room right now. So if you have questions about SEVids, the work that is being done, please feel free to ask, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 26? Seeing none, the motion is that voters appropriate the sum of $6,576 to be raised by taxes to support services provided by SEVids. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
The nays appear to have it. The nays have it. Article 26 has been defeated. Article 27, shall the town appropriate the sum of $1,850 to help support outpatient mental health and substance abuse services by the staff of healthcare and rehabilitation services in accordance with 24 VSA 2691? Is there a motion? Mr. Rukasi?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters appropriate the sum of $1,850 to be raised by taxes to support outpatient mental health and substance abuse services provided by HCRS.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that voters appropriate the sum of $1,850 to be raised by taxes to support outpatient mental health and substance abuse services provided by HCRS. Discussion on the motion? Mr. Gassett?
Dale Gassett, I feel like I'm repeating my earlier question. Is there somebody here from HCRS that can give us a very clear delineation of exactly what they do with the money?
Anyone here from HCRS? Oh, please come forward.
Karen Amadon, I'm not from HCRS, but I have a family member who participates greatly there and has been in front of it, but I will be voting no for this because I feel that they have so much other funding available federally, through Social Security, through many other things, that my real estate tax money, I feel, is meant to be in Vernon, for Vernon, for Vernon roads, for Vernon perhaps garbage, for things that belong in Vernon, not other things that have other funding.
Further discussion on the article? Seeing none, again, the motion is for voters to appropriate the sum of $1,850 to be raised by taxes to support outpatient mental health and substance abuse services provided by HCRS. All those in favor of the article, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
The nays appear to have it. The nays have it. You have defeated Article 27. Article 28, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $3,250 to help support the visiting nurse and hospice for Vermont and New Hampshire? Is there a motion? Mrs. Harris?
Mr. Moderator, I move that we pass over this article due to a discontinuance of services in Vernon as of April 15, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to pass over the article due to a discontinuance of services in Vernon as of April 15 of 2025. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to skip over this article, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. You have passed over Article 28. Article 29, shall the voters appropriate the sum of $1,750 to help support Senior Solutions? Is there a motion? Mr. Pinkerton?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion that the voters approve the sum of $1,750 to be raised by taxes to support services provided by Senior Solutions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the voters appropriate the sum of $1,750 to be raised by taxes to support services provided by Senior Solutions. Discussion on the motion? Ms. Sherwin?
Kevin Golden, who's the Executive Assistant to Senior Solutions, had planned on being here tonight, but he is at Windsor Town Meeting, so he did send me a statement as I'm the rep for Vernon for Senior Solutions here. So he said, "Federal and state funding for our work has not kept pace with rising costs in everything from food to office supplies to staffing, labor, and the growing number of older Vermonters who need assistance. Vermont is one of the oldest states in the country, and it is expected that one in three Vermonters will be over the age of 60 by 2030. So while we have more people to serve, and it costs more to serve each of them, the funding we rely on from state and federal government is lagging behind. On top of this, last year, the state appointed Senior Solutions as a case management provider for all clients under the Choices for Care and Moderate Needs Group Medicaid Programs, two of the largest programs that help older adults stay in their homes in Southern Vermont, including the town of Vernon." So there's, the report is in the town, his report is in the town book, and this also provides, we have probably, I think, six or eight people in Vernon that receive Meals on Wheels every day that comes from Senior Solutions, and the delivery person that does that is a Vernon resident, a volunteer, a Vernon resident.
Thank you. Further discussion on the article? Mr. Pond?
I'd like to speak in favor of this bill because, I don't know how many people know, but the Vernon Bus comes to the Dumerson Center Green every second and fourth Wednesday of the month, and this program sponsors a senior meal. And these two Wednesdays of each month, we serve a full, you know, meat, taters, vegetables, dessert, you name it, they get a full meal for just the mere price of $4. And if you walk out of there hungry, it's because you didn't stand up and say, "I'd like to have some more." And this program helps sponsors, we serve anywhere from 150 to 200 people every second and fourth, and these people are all seniors. Sometimes they come and they get it and they take the food home, and sometimes they come and they sit in and eat and enjoy camaraderie amongst each other. But the Senior Solutions is a very good program, and it helps feed a lot of people, in my concern.
Thank you. Further discussion on Article 29? Seeing none, all those in favor of the article which is to appropriate the sum of $1,750 to be raised by taxes to support services provided by Senior Solutions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The ayes have it? You have passed Article 29. Article 30, shall the voters authorize payment of real and personal property taxes to the treasurer in three installments with due dates being September 11 of 2025, January 8 of 2026, and May 7 of 2026? Is there a motion? Mr. Rukasi?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters authorize payment of real and personal property taxes to the town treasurer in three installments with due dates being September 11, 2025, January 8, 2026, and May 7, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, the voters authorize payment of real and personal property taxes to the town treasurer in three installments with due dates being September 11 of 2025, January 8, 2026, and May 7, 2026? Discussion on the motion? I really, oh, okay, go ahead, Ms. Baldwin.
Catherine Baldwin, these dates are Thursday, and our offices are closed on Fridays. Should maybe the dates be on a day where the box will be checked, like, and checks cash at least the very next day? Possibly?
The select board is queried. If you choose to be... Mrs. Harris?
They are checked on Friday. Somebody comes in and checks for them.
Oh, I didn't realize the town office had work going on on Fridays. Okay.
It's easier to get stuff done.
So any further discussion on Article 30? Seeing none, all those in favor of the article as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've passed Article 30. Now we move ahead to Article 31. Shall the voters approve the provision of notice of availability of the town report and auditor's report by postcard mailed to all registered voters at least 30 days prior to town meeting in lieu of mailing or otherwise distributing the town report and auditor's report as authorized by Vermont law and 24 VSA 1682A2? Is there a motion? Mr. Dunkley?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the voters approve the provision of notice of availability of the town report and auditor's report by postcard mailed to all registered voters at least 30 days prior to town meeting in lieu of mailing or otherwise distributing the town report and auditor's report as authorized by Vermont law and 24 VSA Section 1682A2.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded that the voters approve the provision of notice of availability of the town report and auditor's report by postcard mailed to all registered voters at least 30 days prior to town meeting in lieu of mailing or otherwise distributing the town report and auditor's report as authorized by Vermont law and 24 VSA Section 1682A2? Discussion on the motion? Mr. Gassett?
Dale Gassett, is the audit report available now?
The select board is queried. Mrs. Harris?
I'm sorry, it is not.
I'll be as blunt as I can be. The audit report is supposed to be available by statute 10 days before our town meeting.
We know that.
Is there a reason that it's not? I know that, I have an emotional connection because the town obliterated the town auditors, which did their job in a timely fashion, and I know that a lot of towns are going to outside auditors. But being that as it may, months previous, so it sort of begs the question, how do the numbers come to be in the town report if there's no audit report available? And I'm not saying, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I just wanted to put it out there for public consumption. How can you guys do your job?
It's not been easy.
This is, and somebody's saying that exactly right. This is not the first year it's happened. It seems to be a perpetual situation where the town audit report is not available 10 days before town meeting. How can we change that and how can we rectify this incredible malfeasance going on here?
It is, it is. Is Malfeasant, I can't believe that.
I really cannot hear you. In fact, the select board chair has a letter that she'd like to read that would provide some light on the situation. Unless there's objection by the board or by the body, we'll allow her to read it.
I received this this evening. Can you hear me?
No. It's on, it's on.
It's on, okay. I'm gonna eat it. I received this this evening to the citizens of Vernon, Vermont, Select Board Chair Mrs. Sandra Harris and the Vernon Select Board, from Mrs. Cindy Turnley, Town Treasurer, date As most of you know, after reading my letter in the Brattleboro Reformer, or for the short time it was on the Town of Vernon Facebook page, it has been a very busy and stressful time for my husband, Kevin, and myself. Just after we got home from Boston, we received a letter from the town attorney upon the request of the select board asking for my resignation. When I refused, I received another letter signed by the entire select board stating they were considering turning it over to the Attorney General. As Kevin's rehabilitation is going to continue for the foreseeable future, and his restrictions are ongoing, and the select board and town administrators' lack of confidence in my ability to do my job, which in 20 years, and it's never been called into question, I am resigning my position as your treasurer, effective at the end of the town meeting tonight, 03/03/2025. On a personal and professional level, I would like to thank the citizens of Vernon for their trust and confidence in me over the 20 years, and wish you all the best in the future. We truly understand the phrase, "Life is too short." Now, some of you heard that Shelley didn't get back to some people. Shelley and Kathy have been doing the work. We wouldn't have had any of the financials if it wasn't for those two girls. Cindy has her hands full, and she couldn't do it, and we were just asking if we could get her some help, and she didn't want any. So we're gonna miss Cindy, we wish her the very best, but there's your answer, sir. I'm sorry.
Life happens while we're making other plans. I appreciate that and the due diligence that she has shown in the past for getting the numbers out, but I appreciate you reading that letter and my condolences go to the
Thank you. Further discussion on Article 31? Mr. Pond?
I was just wondering, is there a specific time they do these audits? Is it like the first of April to be done by June, something like that?
The select board is queried.
Stuff is sent to them periodically, and then they work on it, and then they come down. They come down and do an audit. And usually it's at the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30.
Maybe they should try and come in a little bit sooner, or maybe we should try and change our end of the fiscal year to satisfy getting this report back, because if they're so busy doing the end of the fiscal year for everybody else and they can't get it out, maybe we need to make some changes.
They weren't given the documentation they needed.
Okay. And is Cindy the only person that can do this?
She's the only one that can do parts of it. Yeah, she's the only one that can do it. Kathy cannot.
Okay. Can our town manager, or whatever her ability is, can she not be cross-trained to learn that job?
She has the training.
I mean, if we have this situation again, whether it be the treasurer, the town clerk, or somebody else, I mean, we went through a lot this year, and you know, it wasn't all her fault.
No.
But somebody should have stepped up to the bat long before now to try and get it fixed. So I say to you, shame on you.
Mr. Rukasi?
So, George, we reached out multiple times to Cindy, multiple emails, multiple phone calls with no response. The only response we got from Cindy was from her attorney. We tried our best as a board, because we knew at this meeting this was going to come down on us. We tried our best, our town, Shelley reached out multiple times. We tried our best, our town, Shelley reached out multiple times, "How can I help? What do you need?" You know, the Assistant Treasurer put 100% of her effort in, and Cindy was not willing to work with us in any way, shape, or form or manner on this, and that's how we ended up where we are. You know, I had to, I had to present Article 4 with numbers for a budget that I literally had to calculate on my phone about five minutes before the start of this meeting, because I didn't have all the information until then. So this has been extremely stressful on this board, and I think we've done a very good job with the information that we've had and been given and been allowed to have.
Mr. Gassett, there are other people who wish to speak first?
Don Rosinsky.
In fact, Mr. Rosinsky has his hand up.
Don Rosinsky, the whole thing has been dragging on for quite some time, and I can understand how stressful it's been for everybody from the Town Administrator and Assistant Treasurer I threw down to board, and I keep thinking that now, is the treasurer, number one, is at an elected position? And number two, when will we be able to come up with a candidate for treasurer?
Mrs. Harris?
When an elected official resigns or is no longer there, the Select Board appoints to the next town meeting. And she is elected, we had no say over what she does. She has the same power that takes five of us, it takes one of her, you know, and she's the only one that had access to the stuff that was needed.
Mr. Gassett?
This is not a gotcha, but by statute, with her resignation, aren't you duty-bound to do a full audit of her finances?
Oh, definitely.
I'm just asking the question.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion, Mr. Emery?
I will be brief. First of all, I would not say shame on anyone that works so hard for this town, I say thank you. I think unless you sit in that spot, or in a lot of other spots in this town, you don't appreciate the work and the time and the heart that goes into it. So shame on you, Mr. Pond, for saying that. So congratulations and thank you all.
I would say that the meeting rules not allow us to speak to other members by name. Ms. Frost, please continue.
Heather Frost, would it be possible for the treasurer to be a higher position?
Mrs. Harris?
And would that change? Change it?
Yes, that would be my vote of the town.
Could we conduct that business here now?
No.
That's an item that is not warned, it would need a special town meeting, as I understand.
Mr. Cossi?
And just for clarification, we received that, I mean, Sandy received that letter tonight. You know, Cindy's been non-responsive as far as, we didn't even know if she was planning on attending town meeting tonight, we've gotten nothing from her until that letter tonight.
Further discussion on Article Number 31. Seeing none, the motion, again, is that the voters approve the provision of notice of availability of the town report and auditor's report by postcard mailed to all registered voters at least 30 days prior to town meeting in lieu of mailing or otherwise distributing the town report and auditor's report by authorized by Vermont law and 24 VSA Section 1682A2. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. You've passed Article 31. We move to Article 32, other business that may likely come before the said meeting. Mr. Pinkerton?
Again, I apologize for the voice. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move that we open the discussion on the Great River Hydro Solar Array.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we open discussion on the Great River Hydro Solar Array. Again, since this is not a warned question, all discussion is purely advisory along with any votes to be taken. Discussion on Article 32. Mrs. Manning?
Hi, Norma Manning from the Vernon Conservation Commission. I'm not complaining or anything, but our commission was left off of Page 2 through 5, and we do have a regular meeting at the end of the month, last Tuesday of the month at 6:30. I want to let the community here know that we have done our due diligence on this question from our Office of Town Heritage and the conservation of the wildlife corridor and the farming community, we really did a lot of work on this. I have a handout over at the other table, in case you didn't pick it up, and if you have any questions from the perspective of what a conservation commission looked at for this purpose, please ask.
Further discussion on Article 32? Seeing none, and seeing no further discussion on it, any other business under Article 32 other business to be coming before this meeting? Ms. Smythe is first, and then Mr. Parker after that.
I'm Donna Smith, I want to thank the board and the town for all that you do, and I know, Tim, you were honored earlier, but did anyone do a hip hip hooray? I think we ought to do a hip hip hooray, but that's my opinion. Ready and hip hip hooray! Hip hip hooray! Hip hip hooray! Thank you.
Thank you all. I would tell you that I have a deep, undying love of my hometown, and I wouldn't have gotten to this point if it were not for a woman who's made my life better for the past 38 years, and no doubt she'll continue to do so, and sometimes kicking and screaming. So thank you all, but especially thank you soon, you'll have me soon enough. Any further discussion under Article 32? With that, I would like to call the lone candidate for moderator in tomorrow's election, Mrs. Amadon, to the podium to formally close tonight's meeting. By the way, her father was a former Speaker of the Vermont House and former Brattleboro Town Moderator, so the heritage is there.
Where is?
Just say, ask for a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So do.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? We're done.
Thank you. Ah, boy.